You know I've traveled near and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that are nice to me. One place that's in my heart and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the sand hills on a river called Cake Field. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one hurt around the world. Sherman marks for the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing for stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville.
Well, good evening. We'd like to welcome everyone to the September 23th Fable City Council Meeting. At this time, we would ask that Pastor Joshua Goodman, Cliftdale Christian Center, would come to the podium. Acts at all with rise please for the invocation. Acts at two, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance immediately following.
Let us all bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father God, we come before you. Father, thanking you first of all for our city. God, for the blessing it is to live in this city, this state, this nation, God. And Father, we just ask in the name of Jesus for your wisdom tonight. God, as those who lead this city, our city council members, our mayor, God, as they make decisions, as they steer, as they lead, as they guide, as they direct, that Father, you would give them your wisdom, your strategy, your plan, your counsel, oh God, and that, Father, they would continue to lead, guide, direct our city in your will. Father, I thank you for them, and I thank you, God, for just all of your wonderful blessings that you have given to us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Goodman, good to see you again, sir.
Good to see you, my friend.
We're very familiar with you. You do a lot of work in the community and very interactive in the city, but tell those who are viewing and who are joining us in the audience about yourself and your ministry.
Sure. My name's Pastor Joshua Goodman. My dad founded Cliftdale Christian Center thirty-five years ago and passed it on to me about ten years ago, and I've been senior pastor there for the past ten years since then. We've started a Christian Academy where we've had the opportunity to represent Cumberland County several times at the Scripps Spelling Bee over the past few years up in Washington DC. Of course, that's one of just the most powerful things we do, and then, of course, our partnership with your office and the prayer with the mayor and all that we see, the strategy that you've given us to identify the problem areas in our city and what we can do as clergy to partner with the city and make our city greater. So I thank you for that, and City Council, thank you guys.
Thank you for joining us, sir. And at this time, I will go to Councilmember Jensen. Do we have a special guest?
Mr. Mayor, I think our special guest isn't here tonight, but I did want to give an update on the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council. Monday night, last Monday night, they had their second, their second meeting to have new members come in, and they were waiting outside the door that we had so many people interested in coming that we had to order new chairs. So our council is growing, and they are working very hard on the Jazz Festival that's coming the last weekend in October. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for the work that you all are doing with the Fable Youth Council. At this time, we'll ask Mr. Greg Weber from the Arts Council if he could come forth and tell us about some special dates coming up.
Mayor, thank you so much for inviting me here tonight, members of council. I'm absolutely delighted to be here. City Manager's Office, you and your team, you have supported the Arts Council so well. I'm so appreciative of everything that you guys, all of you, do for us at the Arts Council. So this week is International Folk Festival Week, and I know to you all, it might not seem fantastic, but I've never been through one. So I am about as excited as a small ant on a pile of honey. This is going to be fantastic on what's coming up. And just as a reminder for those folks that don't remember why the International Folk Festival is so important to our region is that it was created to celebrate the rich, diverse cultural roots inside of the Fayetteville and Cumberland County community. And the purpose and the scope of the festival is to present to the arts and create, the arts and creative expression of all of our community, of the ethnic and cultural groups that unify our community, and celebrating our uniqueness that makes this region strong. This is a really special event here. It's going to have this year over a hundred and twenty vendors, seventy arts and crafts, thirty cultural vendors. We're this year making few changes. We're going to spice this up some this year. We are now having forty performance groups perform on eight separate stages around Festival Park on the Saturday and Sunday coming up this week. We're going to have all of these eight performance areas engaged, and if you want to find out what's going on, I'll touch on just a couple of special items. If you want to find out what's going on, we also have brand-new this year a festival mobile app so that you can track all of the food that you want to eat, because there's going to be over twenty-eight cultural groups there with home-cooked meals. You can track all of the entertainment and the forty different cultures that you want to see. All you have to do is go to Grandstand Events or go to the Arts Council mobile media, and it also helps us track total volume inside of the park, which is a really fantastic economic development item that's important to me. The parade is going to have thirty-four cultural groups, and this year, we have two special things for you from Mexico. Mexico is going to be bringing in their Tennessee walking horses, and boy, don't miss that one, because also Mexico placed the call-out to their colleagues all around the state of North Carolina, and there's going to be over two-hundred Mexican performers this year in front of the review stand. This is going to be pretty fantastic and impressive. And then Hawaii, if you remember about four years ago, I don't, I wasn't here at the time, if you remember about four years ago, Hawaii had their Voyager, that big Hawaiian canoe come in. Well, you know what? They're bringing it back, and it's going to be even better, and I'm told they have surprises. They won't even tell me about this, so that they're going to have. We have seven new cuisines this year. We have Nepal, Bangladesh, Indonesia, Mexico, Colombia, a return of Germany, thank goodness, and for a first time ever, vegan at the International Folk Festival this year, and that's thanks to the Vegan Festival downtown. Just really quickly, on our main stage, we're going to have some really cool events. We're going to have on Saturday night, we're going to open with Lucky Pocket, which is an evolution of music. Boy, this is just one of the hippest, soulful groups from North Carolina that I've heard. I'm really excited about these. We're also going to be bringing in from Disney, who performs their Rex Fire. Now, this is better stand back, because this guy is a Polynesian fire and knife performer. You know, he's really trained, but I wouldn't trust it too much. I'm staying a little further back. And then Rock Explosion. Rock Explosion's going to open up with the Bon Jovi with Jimmy Buffett Madonna and one of my all-time favorites, Tina Turner's going to be singing here tonight. Of course, they're all impersonators, but I'm really excited for them. But most importantly, what I'm excited about is we have a new event on Sunday. Sunday is going to become a family day in the park. You're going to have, all of the bouncy houses will be free to the children that come in. We're also going to have several vendors who are going to be donating. We're going to have free turkey sandwiches from one to two, only from one to two there for the first people that show up, tropical icies, Minnie Cheese Frozen Yogurt will be there from two to three. This is really a time to focus on what's happening, but what's more exciting to me is we have a new event called Praise in the Park. When I moved here, I saw that there were over six hundred churches here and that each one of them had its own choir. So I said, if we have six hundred churches and all of those voices that want to sing, then International Folk Festival needs to focus on our heritage. And you're going to see ten total groups. You're going to see five choirs and five dance and praise worship groups performing that afternoon on the main stage inside of the park. This is, I am so excited about that. And then it's going to finish up with a local gospel singer who is just starting to make it big from North Carolina named Yaiel Hilton, and she's going to be performing for the, yeah, Yaiel, go. She's rocks, doesn't she? And for the first time, she's going to be performing a couple of her newly cut hits that she's put out there, so they'll be heard for the first time here in Fayetteville. So I look forward to seeing all of you on the review stand. Very excited about the parade. I can't wait. It's my first one. And remember, download that mobile app so you can learn everything that's going on. So thank you all so much, Mayor Colvin. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for the Arts Council who put on a wonderful festival every year. If you've never experienced it, it's quite a show. Sounds like it's getting better. At this time, we'll ask that Ms. Michelle Old, Director of the Diaper Bank of North Carolina, as well as the leadership from Partners for Children, if they meet me at the podium.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to go ahead and start the proclamation. It's going to be like getting your high school diploma. You're going to take the picture, and then we'll give you the real copy afterwards. Okay. Whereas diaper need, the condition of not having sufficient supply of clean diapers to ensure that infants, toddlers are clean, healthy, and dry can adversely affect the health and welfare of infants, toddlers, and their families. And whereas national surveys report that one in three mothers experiencing diaper need in some time while their children are less than three years of age, and forty-eight percent of families delaying changing a diaper to extend their supply. And whereas the average infant or toddler requires the average of at least fifty diaper changes per week over three years. And whereas there are no government assistance programs for the purchase or provision of diapers, and a monthly supply of diapers can cost as much as six percent of a full-time minimum wage worker's salary. Therefore, obtaining a sufficient supply of diapers can cause economic hardship on families. And whereas a supply of diapers is generally an eligibility requirement for infant and toddlers to participate in childcare programs to qualify early education programs. And whereas the people of Fayetteville recognize that addressing diaper need can lead to economic opportunities for the state's low-income families and can lead to improved health for families and their communities. And whereas Fayetteville is proud to be the home to various community organizations such as the Diaper Bank of North Carolina that recognize the importance of diapers in helping provide economic stability and families to distribute diapers to poor families through various channels. And now, therefore, I, Mitch Colvin, Mayor of the City of Fayetteville, do hereby proclaim the week of September twenty-second through September twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen, as Diaper Need Awareness Week. I here do set my hand and cause the great silver city of Fayetteville on this twenty-second day of September two thousand and nineteen. Mayor Mitch Colvin.
Proclamation from the office of the mayor. Whereas Loose Anderson will be honored by friends and relatives on the occasion of his one-
Is Mr. Anderson here?
Oh, I'm sorry. Ted, Mayor Pro-Tan was pointing at me, y'all. Whereas Loose Anderson will be honored by friends and relatives on the occasion of his one-hundredth birthday on September twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen. And whereas he was born in Commerce, Georgia, to parents Eli and Elise Anderson on September twenty-seventh, nineteen nineteen. And whereas he grew up with his four brothers Felton, Ed, Eli, and Andrew, and his five sisters Frances, Celia, Willie Lee, Juanita, and Geraldine. And whereas he served in the military as a cook during World War II in England and France from nineteen forty-one and nineteen forty-six. And whereas he met his wife of fifty-nine years, Eura Lee, in Columbia, South Carolina, while he was stationed at Fort Jackson, and she was a nursing student at Allen University. And whereas they have two sons, seven grandchildren, and eight grandchildren. And whereas he has lived in Fayetteville for seventy-four years, having worked at Womack Hospital, and has been a member of First Baptist Church for seventy-two years, where he has served as a deacon for sixty-five-plus years. And whereas during a long and productive lifetime, he has devoted himself to his hobbies of gardening and billiards, his favorite team, the Atlanta Braves, his family and friends, and his church. Now, therefore, I, Mitch Colvin, Mayor of the City of Fayetteville, North Carolina, and on behalf of the city council and more than two-hundred-and-eight-thousand citizens, do hereby deem it an honor and pleasure to extend this proclamation to Mr. Loose Anderson on the occasion of his one-hundredth birthday with sincere congratulations and best wishes for many more happy and productive years.
Wow, what a great tribute to Mr. Anderson and his family. So God, continue to bless you, sir. At this time, we will ask that, I'll go back to Councilmember Jensen, our special guest has arrived.
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor. She has been here the whole time. She was sitting in the audience. So this is her first time, and this is Zoe, and she is here from the Cumberland International Early College. And welcome.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Zoe McLendon, and I am a senior at Cumberland International Early College High School. I am here to tell you about what has been occurring at the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council. On Monday, September sixteenth, the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council had its second official meeting. At this meeting, seventy-one people attended, and most of the attendees were new members. That alone was an amazing start to the day. We would also like to thank Councilwoman Jensen for coming to our meeting and speaking to our new and returning members. The Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council was very excited and ready to attend the Service Learning Conference held in Wilson County on Saturday, September twenty-first. We had a total of twenty FCYC members attend this conference, along with all of the Wilson Youth Council. Our third FCYC meeting will be held on Monday, September thirtieth. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Well, welcome. Glad to have you. All right, Council, item five point zero is the approval of the agenda. I'll look for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. Agenda is approved.
Right, there is a motion by Councilmember Wright to approve, and I saw a light of Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make an amendment to the agenda.
Okay, if you accept it, what is your amendment?
I would like to make a motion that we add nine point zero-two to the agenda for the purpose to add the presentation of the Appointment Committee, recommendations for boards and commissions.
So Councilmember Wright, there's a friendly amendment request. Will you accept it?
Yeah, I'll accept that amendment.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Wright to approve with the exceptions as noted. Have a second by Councilmember Jensen. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Council, I'll look to you for your votes.
Green.
Oh, yeah, well, Councilmember Wright, you want to vote? Madam Clerk, that motion carries, including Councilmember Art, who joins us by phone. Welcome, sir. That motion is unanimous. Item six point zero is the consent agenda. Councilman Cullerton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item six point zero-one-two merely for discussion clarity to the public on that.
Okay. Councilman Dawkins, I see your light. Second. There's a motion to approve the consent with the exception of item six point zero-one-two for further explanation. A second by Councilmember Dawkins. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Council, I'll look to you for your votes.
Green.
Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Motion carries. Item six point one zero-two, Councilman Cullerton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to alert the public as to what this motion is that I'll be making shortly. This is a long time coming for the folks who live over around the Lox Creek area and Cedar Falls and Lox Creek subdivisions. They had suffered tremendously in the last two hurricanes with flooding and have a very difficult situation over there. And we've been working for them during those periods after those hurricanes to try to do something for them. We were able to get a grant at no cost to the city of just under half a million dollars, four hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, to clear out Lox Creek, which although will not solve all flooding problems, will go a long way to help that flow of water and those residents over there. And so this is also a great step for our county and city governments working together. This will allow the city to take the lead on this and finally get the area cleaned out to help those folks get some relief with the flooding they've been enduring. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Absolutely, and-
And with that, I would make a motion to approve item six point zero-one-two as written.
All right, there's a motion, and thank you, sir, for, I think those words said it all. There's a motion by Councilmember Cullerton to approve item six point zero-one-two. There's a second by Councilmember Wright via lights. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Council, I'll look to you for your votes.
Green.
Madam Clerk, that is also unanimous. Motion carries. Item seven point zero-one, reports from Cool Spring Downtown District Annual Report. Hello?
Hello.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Patrick Callahan, I'm here as the former chair, or past chair of the Board of Directors of Cool Spring Downtown District. Just really want to just say a couple of words here to welcome Bianca and say it's always a pleasure to be in front of you. And Ms. Bianca Shoneman, of course, you're aware, has joined us as our president and CEO, and we couldn't be happier about that. As many of you, or probably all of you know, and several of you assisted with, there was an extensive search done, a nationwide search, and we were delighted to find someone with expertise in placemaking and downtown development to round out the efforts of hundreds of volunteers and a dedicated Board of Directors, and we're very excited in a moment to hear her report.
Mr. Mayor and the council, my name is David Blackman, the current chair and also pastor of Hay Street United Methodist Church. And just on behalf of our board, we're excited about you having a chance to get to know Bianca this evening, as well as the city to learn about Cool Spring Downtown District. So we want to give her the, yield the time to her so she can help educate us all tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, guys. Good morning, or good evening. My name is Bianca Shoneman with Cool Spring Downtown District. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. Let me see if I can get this thing to move. Can you see it?
Yes, we can.
Can you see it? Is it showing correctly? Okay, great. So, Cool Spring Downtown District was created in two thousand and seven, two thousand and seventeen by a joint act between the city council and the Arts Council. We like to focus our efforts around several different topics, and I just wanted to walk you through some of our efforts over the last year. So by way of design, which is one of the relevant components of a great downtown, and I have to say, upon first look of downtown Fayetteville, your city streets are absolutely gorgeous. You have twenty-foot-wide sidewalks, and they are amazing. Brick inlays, great planters, wonderful decorative lighting. It's very enchanting, and it promotes a stroll, which is a real important element of downtown. This past year, Cool Spring Downtown District has made some big strides with placemaking, and two of those big outputs were those crosswalks that you see as you enter into our downtown district, and then, of course, the giant blue light, which is a demarcation that you have entered into the Cool Spring Downtown District. Hope you guys like them. I think they're very welcoming and warm and colorful additions to our center city. There's also lovely new murals that have gone up, and there's talk of adding some additional murals throughout the district and alley activation to further placemaking throughout our central business district and to continue on with the great design of the center city. Downtown must-have programming, and upon recent inspection, what we saw was that over three hundred and twenty-six events occurred in the Cool Spring Downtown District. It's important to note that our small entity with a staff of three did not pull off all three hundred and twenty-six events. You guys have a really fantastic body of folks that are out there eventing your downtown. Festival Park, the Arts Council, there are really good things that are activating your downtown already in place. Two things, though, that our Cool Spring Downtown District did were this ice skating rink that sold out, from what I hear, every time that it was on, and then the summer concert series called Downtown Summer Nights. Here's a look at that sort of increase of events. In two thousand and eighteen, it was clocked in at about two hundred and twenty-six events downtown, three hundred and twenty-six events over the last fiscal year. That's a very exciting increase in programming for your downtown. So if you think about it, three hundred and twenty-six events in the downtown district, that's nearly an event every single night. Something is happening in your central business district. By way of marketing, our organization does maintain several Facebook pages and social media accounts. social media accounts. Those numbers are here before you. You can see our grab on our downtown Fayetteville page comes in right under twenty-eight thousand, uh, people. That's about a third of the, um, sorry, that's not right. Uh, that's a huge, uh, amount of your community paying attention to our social media account. And then we have our Cool Spring Downtown District page, which is relatively new, and, uh, we have about a thousand followers on that now. And at last check, our Fourth Friday Facebook page, which has been around for a long time, has about eight thousand followers. Total engagement there comes in a little under three hundred and fifty thousand, and we think that there's still room for improvement with those social media accounts. We've recently joined Instagram, and, uh, we have a smaller, uh, amount of followers there, plenty of room for improvement. But I also, uh, wanted to make note that we have some existing marketing contracts. We're running a video at Segra Stadium. Uh, we have a longstanding contract with the Fayetteville Observer, City View Relocation Guide, Fayetteville Press, and the, uh, Cumulus Radio. Uh, you know, I think those are all good places to start for marketing the downtown district, but I'd like to see that, uh, expand a little bit. You know, how we communicate, how fantastic this downtown is, not only to the people of Cumberland County, but also to the brighter, brighter breadth of our region is very important. So I look forward to finding new ways to communicate Cool Springs Downtown District's vibrancy. Uh, by way of economic vitality, all these great things happened, uh, over many years of fantastic planning and really the backbone of good decisions that your council made and that of the efforts of your staff. So I just want to hit on some of those, uh, really big outputs by way of economic development. In the last year, the Cool Spring Downtown District celebrates over fifty-two thousand gross square feet of new residential development. In large part, you'll see that impact coming out of Prince Charles Holdings and the new fifty-nine unit apartments that have come online. Those apartments are quite stunning. Take a look at them. I mean, that is modern living right here across the street from City Hall, a great place to live. In addition, we celebrate close to fifty-four thousand gross square feet of new commercial space. Now, some of that commercial space is within Segra Stadium, right? And those are local businesses that have relocated. But in addition, there are also these, uh, great adaptive reuse projects, right? Where we're taking up vacant storefronts, and we're building beautiful spaces that are inviting and, uh, encourage a spirit of entrepreneurship for those that are makers or that have a great idea. They can come in to our downtown district and make those dreams become a reality in a beautiful space. Um, in total, we celebrate over sixteen new businesses that have come online in the fiscal year twenty nineteen. The list of those new businesses is right there. Very excited to see those numbers increase over the years, and I'd love to see some new, uh, partnerships formed between the city of Fayetteville, the, uh, Fayetteville Economic Development Corporation, the Chamber of Commerce perhaps, where we look at how we really specifically target what types of business, businesses we want in our downtown to fill up those vacant properties. Uh, in total, we estimate that a street-level vacancy has been decreased by eighteen percent. This is about filling those vacant storefronts, and in turn, those, uh, sixteen new businesses created about two hundred new jobs. Those are really big numbers for downtown our size. Big numbers, you guys. You should be proud of the work that you've done. Uh, programming coming down the pipeline for us as the Cool Spring Downtown Districts, as I just figured out how to work the steering wheel, right, is, uh, we'd love to focus on growing that residential population and looking at how we grow the employee base downtown. We have a really beautiful retail mix, mix and restaurant mix, but for them to survive throughout the day, uh, during the workday, we need to increase that foot traffic, and I see that coming by way of residential and employment population growth. Additionally, uh, it's my understanding that Fayetteville is one of the unique cities in our, in our, in our state, and that it doesn't receive its, the majority of its revenue from ad valorem taxes. Uh, we, so to that tune, right? We'd love to go out and pursue more ad valorem tax and, uh, growing that property tax by taking property tax or taking vacant properties and putting them back on the tax roll is a really good return on that investment. It's also important to think about how we densify, how we add verticality to our downtown. You know, the taller we build, the larger return on investment we get on a per acre value level, and that's really important stuff when you think about how you generate funding for city services. So we'd like to take a deep look at that. In addition, I think it's important for us to think about walkability. Your downtown already has a really, really lovely bones. It's so gorgeous. But how can we foster more active transportation? And I think that's what every downtown is talking about, right? Currently, if you Google the walk score of, uh, the Cool Spring Downtown District Office, which is, uh, two-two-two Hay Street, our walk score is sixty-five. Uh, there's plenty of room for improvement there, and that means adding a little bit better infrastructure and some more wayfinding, which someone mentioned at an earlier meeting. Um, our organization is here, you know, we are coming in at a time where there's been a lot of, um, interest in our central business district, a lot of great merchant activity, a lot of good investment activity. Our, our organization hopes to stand at the center of that with a collaborative spirit, bringing forth solutions for a modern downtown. So that is my presentation. I am here to answer any questions if you would like.
So, thank you so much. That was quite, uh, comprehensive. Um, as you talk about the walk score...
Yeah.
And I saw that, uh, on your slide, you also had, uh, biking lanes, and those are things that we've got to do. Um, in a lot of downtown cities, you see the line bikes or the scooters, which I heard are, are a problem. But what, what are the score metrics that, that these companies use for the line bikes in particular? The scooters are not necessarily...
Yeah.
That's how I...
So, uh, Limebike has actually moved all to a scooter system, so they no longer do the biking system, but in Greenville, we had that same problem, and we went for Gotcha Bikes just recently, and the Gotcha Bike was, uh, pretty easy to do. If we were interested in recruiting them, we'd be happy to talk to your transportation planners on putting together an RFI to solicit information on company interest.
Well, I guess my question is, uh, on your experience, do we need to do more infrastructure design to make that safe? Is that one of the whole...
That's always the best, yeah. Having great infrastructure does en- ensure the safety of the user.
All right. Uh, Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. You indicated that, that downtown has a walk score at two-two-two Hay Street of sixty-five. For the purposes of comparison, what is the top walk score that a person can receive?
Good question. A hundred is the perfect score. Times Square has a hundred.
Okay. All right. Good. All right, any other questions, uh, for Ms. Shoneman? All right, well, welcome to the, to the community. I think, uh, we need a, uh, motion to receive this report.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to receive this report.
Okay. All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Wright and a second by Councilmember Dawkins to receive the report as presented. Uh, any discussion on the motion? All right, Council, I'll look to you for your votes.
Green.
All right, that is unanimous, including Councilmember Arp's green. All right, item eight point...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Item eight point zero is the public hearing. Individuals desiring to speak at the public hearing must have signed up to speak with the city clerk by name and address before seven PM this evening. Fifteen minutes will be allowed for each side of an issue, uh, at the public hearing. Individual speakers will be limited to three minutes each unless by previous arrangement a single spokesperson is designated, in which case the spokesperson may use the entire fifteen minutes. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium. Please clearly state your name and address for the record. You may then address the council. When the light changes from green to amber, means you have thirty seconds remaining. At the end of your allotted time, the timer will ring. And at this time, we'll ask that the staff person who's presenting item eight point zero-one, uh, will come forth.
Hello. Good afternoon, Mayor Colvin and council. My name is Sipney Neal. I'm the Assistant Transit Director for Fayetteville Area System of Transit. I am here to talk to you about the item that is before you, which is the Urban Advanced Technology Grant. This is a grant provided by NCDOT. It is actually an interactive grant, um, that is what we call a ninety-ten grant. This grant, um, provided by NCDOT is ninety percent funded by NCDOT and ten percent would be funded by FAST. The IVR system or the interactive, um, voice response notification system is for our pair of transit customers. Our pair of transit customers would utilize this system or we would utilize this system for them, so it would be an automated system that would actually call the customer or notify the customer that FAST is approaching, whether it be within five minutes, whether it be within three minutes. We can set those parameters, but it is a commonly used interactive voice response system. Um, currently, the grant is for forty thousand dollars approximately, so our local share would be four thousand dollars. This is an, um, item that we do have that's currently in our TIP, and with that being said, we are asking council to authorize a resolution for us to submit the grant to NCDOT.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Uh, so at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, please call your first speaker.
May we have no speakers for this item?
All right. This time, we'll close the public hearing on this item. Uh, council, open up for any questions or points of action. Uh, Councilman Chris?
If there are no questions, Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the resolution and submission of a grant application to the North Carolina Department of Transportation for an urban advanced technology grant of thirty-six thousand dollars.
So, thank you, Councilman Chris. We have a motion by Councilmember Chris, a second by Councilmember Herr by lights. Uh, any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes.
Green.
Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eight point zero-two, public hearing on text amendments for Article thirty. Five proposed amendments for the UDO adjustment. Mr. Freeman?
Good evening, Mayor, city council, Torres Freeman Planning, zoning divisional manager. Uh, what you all have tonight is five recommendations for text amendments. Uh, these text amendments are one, uh, four, one of five bundles of text amendments as recommended by the UDO Task Force, which was an ad hoc committee that was established by the mayor. Uh, they operated for over one year and looked at all, reviewed all the development standards within section thirty-five of our Unified Development Code. These items right now are, were heard by the Planning Commission on July twenty-sixth, uh, two thousand and nineteen. Um, all of them received approval with the exception of TA nineteen forty, which was the tree removal fee that was, actually was recommended for denial by the Planning Commission as well as staff. And just for another point of clarity, TA nineteen forty-seven, a front and a but clarification, that actually deals with the building orientation of open space. Uh, after review from staff, staff was recommending that it be remanded back to staff for further consideration, uh, for clarity standpoint to go before the Planning Commission and the city council at a later date. Our first item is TA, TA nineteen forty. Uh, this is a proposed text amendment dealing with the tree removal. Uh, tree removals from the UDO Task Force, they did a recommendation of, of one hundred dollars, of one hundred dollars per caliber inch to fifty dollars per caliber inch. Uh, staff was against this request as well as the Planning Commission. As some of you all may know, the city of Fayetteville is, has been a recipient of the Tree City USA for the past seventeen years, and one of the things that we want to do is encourage the saving of specimen trees within our city. Here we have the current and proposed codes, where as you can see, the one hundred per caliber in current code and the reduction here in the proposed code section. This is an example of a specimen tree that is quite old. Um, I think it is approximately around two hundred years old, according to some sources, and a tree of this magnitude right here in, in the width that it is, actually would take over three or four generations, uh, for us to see its maturity. So therefore, we are encouraging the trees be preserved not only in our community, but to maintain a healthy climate for all throughout our wonderful city. In the fees that we collect from our tree removals, uh, the city has collected over four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars since the exception in two thousand and twelve. Now, those trees that are removed are only for commercial and subdivisions, which need to go through the plating process for, and they can only be utilized within the quadrant from which they are removed. At this time, staff is recommending denial of this request. Our next item is TA nineteen forty-three. This deals with cul-de-sacs and street stubs. Uh, the task force recommended that we have a cross-reference section of final plats to go along with this, within this ordinance. Now, temporary street stubs have to go through the plating process if they meet our development standards. Um, and what these task force wanted to do was make sure that this section was actually cross-referenced with another section, so therefore, anyone who is applying for this would be able to, to look at our final plating process. Here you have the language in the proposed code, which states the final plats emission must also fulfill the requirements as set forth in section thirty-point-B six final plats and all other applicable selections. Applicable sections, excuse me. Our next item is TA nineteen forty-seven. This deals with, uh, the development standards of fronting open space of building orientation for single-family units. Uh, this is the item that staff has recommended remanding to, um, back, uh, for further clarification. And what the task force recommended, what we have here is fronting upon the open space and adding the verbiage of either and or but. Now, if you look at the diagram here, the, all the items are, have single-family structures on them, and these are zero, zero lot line developments, single-family developments, and the single-family structure actually has, ten percent has to front the open space. So you have all these lots right here, you have the structures with the primary entranceway fronting the open space itself. Now, what the recommended code does is include the word and or a but, and that allows for these houses to also be counted within that ten percent. However, if you, the section from which it's located is quite confusing because according to the section above, it states that the building orientation, the structure, uh, has to be, the primary structure facade has to be facing a particular way. So I think the recommendation is, is in good nature, however, it does not meet the intent and purposes of the code. Therefore, that's why staff is recommending that this item be remanded. Our next item deals with the design standards for out-parcial developments as recommended by the task force. This right here, this code amendment will allow thirty percent of the required off-street parking to be located in front of the building when a vegetated buffer is, is, um, applicable. And currently, there are, currently in neighborhood commercial, no, for a single, single-story structure, you cannot have front parking, parking that is adjacent to the roadway. Now, what this code would allow is not only allow for the parking to be in the, the side and rear, but also allow it in the, up to thirty percent to be in the front of the structure itself. Uh, this is something that, since the adoption of UDO in two thousand and eleven, that the city in neighborhood commercial, if you have a single story, you could never put your parking in the front of your building. This right here will actually open that up. Here are some examples of that. You have a single story right here, um, which is zone neighborhood commercial. All the parking here is located in the side or rear. What the code will allow is the, you'll have thirty percent of the parking could be along the roadway if they have a vegetated buffer there. Staff and Planning Commission are recommending approval of this request. Our last item deals with vacant commercial establishments within the downtown. Uh, the verbiage, this text amendment here will actually allow other agencies other than the Downtown Alliance, such as the Cool Spring District, to be able to come in and have displays within the buildings within our downtown. And one of the other things that it does is actually, it changes the Planning and Code Enforcement Director, which is actually an antiquated title, and it states that the city manager can have that approval right. But of course, when we say city manager, we mean, or his designate, his or her designate, which is staff. As you can see here in the current code and the proposed code, we have replaced the city manager and the approvals, as well as allowing the other agencies to utilize the display. During our, our agenda briefing, there was conversations about what is considered art. Well, this is what the entire code states regarding art. Uh, works of art include paintings, sculptures, other examples of fine art, or other displays of cultural, historic, or educational value utilizing colorful and vibrant materials and using background panels and other methods for screening views of the unoccupied space from the street or side, or sidewalk. Staff and Planning Commission recommend approval for this request. And that's all our five items today.
Thank you, sir. So at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Uh, Madam Clerk, if you can call your first speaker.
May we have two speakers for this item? The first speaker is Ms. Laurie Epler.
Good evening.
Good evening, Council. It's good to be with you again. Um, first of all, just as I did before, we have several people out in the audience who have supported the efforts of the U D O Task Force and, um, support these, these amendments that are before you tonight. I'd like to ask them to stand, please. Thank you. Just some clarification, and I understand that preservation of trees and preservation of older trees are important, and they're important to all of us. Um, but when a thirty-inch tree costs three thousand dollars, and that person who wants to cut down that tree has to write a check to the city of Fayetteville for three thousand dollars, never see it again, and have someone take that tree down to complete their development. That's, um, it, on a large tract of land, that gets expensive. At the very least, if council chooses to side with Planning Commission and staff and deny this recommendation, we would, we would ask that you at least ask staff to look at our tree preservation ordinance. Um, the number of trees that we are allowed to remove from a site, there is no consolation for the size of the site. At least smaller sites should be given some more leeway than larger sites should. Um, if you're not going to reduce that cost to take those trees out, then at least have your staff look at that preservation ordinance. Your second item that you have tonight, number forty-three, that one's just cleanup and information. As far as the design standards, number forty-seven go, I don't know when exactly that vote was taken in the Task Force meetings, but it's a little bit disheartening that here we are at the end of September, that Task Force finished meeting at the end of April, and staff has just now figured out there's something wrong with that. They have had plenty of time to come back with a proposal for this, that I just find it, it's, it's difficult for me to believe that they've wasted our time and wasted your time, and that wasn't done prior to now. I'm sorry, I have no, I have no control over that. And as far as the design standards for the parking, neighborhood commercial is very difficult to develop right now with no parking in the front, no handicap parking, and at night, after dark, it's a safety issue. People don't want to frequent somewhere where they have to go to the side or the rear of the building when they leave to get in their car. Thank you.
Thank you.
May our next speaker is Mr. Ralph Huff.
Good evening, sir. Uh, Mayor, Council, Ralph Huff, six oh six Forest Lake Road. I'm here just to thank you. Can you believe that? Uh, I want to thank, uh, Mayor Colvin and Councilperson Crisp, who, who really pushed for the Task Force to come together. The Task Force has spent five or six hours a month for a year on this process, and they have really, really done a great job. Uh, and for the most part, the planning staff, the planning board, and you have agreed to their efforts, and I just want to thank you. Uh, I will say something about the, um, parking on the street. If you will ride from Highland Country Club to Seventy-First High School and count the businesses that are going to be out of business when the D O T takes thirty feet off the front of their property, it is astounding. And yet, if you go across from the hospital, somebody built a subway right up on the street, that's cool. That's what, that's what everybody's, that's what everybody's doing. But when that road's widened, they got to tear the building down. D O T's got to condemn the building. So this, no parking on the, on the front is a very, very serious issue that's going to come back to haunt everybody a few years down the road when the street that those house, that those buildings are on have to be widened. But the next thing that's going to come up is going to be the, the two acres and the one acres, and that's going to be probably the most controversy of all. But ride down Rayford Road and look at the businesses that are on less than two acre lots, take thirty feet off the front, and imagine what's going to be left when you try to redevelop it. But thank you for all your help and interest on this.
Thank you, sir.
May we have no further speakers?
Thank you. With that, we will close the public hearing. We do have several questions, uh, starting out with, uh, Councilmember Hare.
Uh, thanks, Mayor. If we are going to, well, I would like to make a, have a discuss, well, I was going to say make a motion, but, uh, item forty and item forty-seven, I remember those items very, very well, especially, uh, forty-seven as far as the front, the frontage and the, um, the rear, uh, parking spaces, and then it was just, uh, spoken about, uh, today. I would love for us to maybe consider, uh, giving, uh, the U D O and staff another opportunity to discuss it, or I would love for it to, to, um, stay as recommended, uh, by the U D O Committee on item, um, especially on item forty-seven.
All right, Councilman Hare, did you, uh, you have a question? I'll circle back to you for motions.
No, sir.
Okay.
No, sir.
All right, uh, Councilman Crisp?
I have three questions, Mr. Mayor. I have one question on number forty, and I have two questions on fifty-one. Tree preservation, number forty, why is staff recommending denial? Can I ask that question? Is that a legitimate question? Why is staff recommending denial? Hundred dollars a inch? Why is staff recommending denial on that? The issue that is of concern to me and others is if we cut down a tree, we need to plant one somewhere. We certainly not going to plant it back where we're cutting one down. But we need to plant a tree when we're cutting one down. Warehouse, a plant's ten every time they're cutting one down. But what, what, I'm trying to get a rationale on why staff is recommending denial of going from a hundred dollars to fifty dollars, a hundred dollars per inch. I ain't got that kind of money if I take a tree down in my, in my yard.
Well, if you take a tree down in your yard, sir, you will not be charged for that.
Well, I might be going to build something in my yard, you know? A table or something, you never know. But my point, you understand, my question is, why are you, why is staff recommending denial when a committee has studied this for a year? Okay? Why are you recommending denial on it?
We just, staff just felt as though that preserving trees is the best interest for the city. Uh, by reducing it, we're actually encouraging people to actually cut down more trees. Uh, and all that resources, all the funds that we get off of cutting trees actually goes back into planting new trees. So therefore, we're encouraging to preserve trees, and if they do cut them down, we're guaranteeing that additional trees. So for every tree that's probably taken down, we can buy ten for, for every tree that's, we can get ten for one, pretty much.
My next two questions, Mr. Mayor, go to number fifty-one. Uh, your wording says, uh, provide that, uh, go ahead, the slide that shows who will provide the artwork, where, where does it say that? It says something about other agencies can approve. Other agencies, there you go. Artwork or other material provided by the Downtown Alliance, or other agencies approved specifically for this purpose. Now, if I'm an owner of a business downtown and the building is vacant for thirty days, and other agency is going to tell me what I can and cannot have in the window of my business, I got a concern with that. And then who's going to provide the artwork, and who's going to pay for that artwork that is provided? Those are my questions. I'm not opposed to this, but those are relevant questions in my mind.
Absolutely.
Thank you, I'm finished.
Uh, do you have an answer for, for that?
As our city continues to grow, we, we will have a lot more of special interest groups within our downtown. Um, having worked in multiple cities throughout the United States, I've always worked with these, a lot of different agencies, and they do a lot of the different things, because they all bring something different to that table. Now, with our city, one of our main, one of our primary groups has always been the Downtown Alliance. Well, with the emergence of our Cool Springs District and their group, they're becoming more active to make our downtown more vibrant. So therefore, now, we, we're opening doors for other agencies to have that opportunity for beautification of our downtown buil- businesses.
Let me, let me respond to that, because I don't want you to miss the point. Nowhere in here do I see where the owner of the property has a voice. That's what I'm talking about. I'm finished, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Well, uh, I did have a couple of questions in, in, in that vein. Um, what is the uniformed measuring system? Is it solely to the discretion of Downtown Alliance or another agency? So if, if we like what's up as an agency, it's, it goes? If we don't, it doesn't? What, what is the standard that they measure it by?
I do not know the standard, sir. Um, having been here only a year, uh, I do not know personally. However, I do know that there's a difference between downtown displays and signage. Now, if a, if you have a display that is a foot away from the window, that's con- that is considered a display. That is not a sign. So therefore, now, you can have a mannequin with a hat on it, whatever you like, and no one pays a fee for that. There's, there's, the city does not charge anyone to have a display. Now, if you were to do a sign in the window, now that would require a permit, and then you allow up to thirty-two square feet, and then it goes.
But all of that process involves the governmental body setting the rules.
Correct.
This proposal says, or other, eh, turn it back to the screen. Artwork and other materials provided by the Downtown Alliance or other agencies specifically for this purpose. So it puts the onus of approval or not on the agencies, the way this is presented. Am I reading that correct?
That is correct, sir. You, you could interpret it that as such.
All right, and the last thing I want to ask you about is about the trees. Can you go back to that picture? Y'all have had to find the most mature, oldest tree possible. To use as an example.
It's very iconic.
Five-hundred-year-old tree is used as the example. So my question is, as we have this four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars in the fund, uh, how many trees have we planted, and what's the pace at which we plant it? Now, if we're requiring these folks to pay it, the onus on us is to put replacement trees in place. How's the city going with that?
Well, that is actually handled by our Parks and Recreation Department. Um, I cannot speak on exactly how many trees they have planted since that time, but I do know that they have withdrawn considerable amount of money in my year working for the city. So therefore, I do know that they are out there utilizing this funds to plant trees back in these quadrants.
So let me redirect that to somebody who is over Parks and Rec. So, Mr. Manager, who could answer a question like that about the pace in which we're putting these down? Because if I pay three thousand dollars for a tree, what's, what system do I have in place that I can measure if three thousand dollars for trees have been placed, planted in there replacement?
We'll have to come back to his information on that, Mayor.
Okay. All right, uh, Councilman Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Councilman Hare and I served as liaisons, and we went to those meetings, and they were long and arduous, and a lot of effort was put in, uh, to this. And now to find out that staff is against this, this tree fine, reduction of the tree fine, I'm very disappointed. Um, and when there's appropriate time, I'm going to join with Councilmember Crisp over there. Um, we've got plenty of money in our tree fund. We're planting plenty of trees. I've even asked citizens to give money to our tree fund at Parks and Rec, to plant trees on Churchill Drive, other places around this city. So, you know, this particular tree does happen to be across the street. It was on Fayetteville Publishing property. The Lilly family, the Arbor family, uh, protected it. And now, part of the agreement when the city took over and, and gave that land to the Airborne Museum, that it would be protected at all costs to the city. Uh, that is a rare tree, similar to the angel oak in Charleston, South Carolina, which may be a hundred or so more years older than this particular tree. But we, when you look at our building permits and you look at the investments in this community, it's gone down almost every year for ten years. So I'm, I'm disappointed that, that staff has recommended that. I'm disappointed also in the front and a but clarification. We worked on that many meetings, and we think we've got that one resolved. But when, when one of our citizens came up and talked about what's going to happen to Rayford Road, it's going to be huge what's going to happen to Rayford Road. People won't be able to park in front of those buildings. We need this front and a but, uh, clarification. So, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Cullerton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A lot of my questions have been asked already. One of the main ones still left for me is, uh, nineteen zero forty on the trees. Uh, I can see how this become just financially infeasible, uh, to develop large tracts of land when, when we're paying these kind of costs on trees. Um, staff's making a recommendation to deny this, but yet they're not ready to give clarity as to why. Uh, I have a problem with that. I think that we either need to, in my opinion, I would like to move forward with approving it as the committee has advised in reducing these fees. And at the very least, if not, then we need to have staff go back and review this and bring some solid answers. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Councilman Jensen, Councilwoman Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I have two things. The first thing I'm going to talk about is the front parking. Um, if you go down Owen Drive, I know that there, I'm not going to say the name of a restaurant, but there's a restaurant there that is right there, butted up to, to the sidewalk. It is. And every time I go in there, I refuse to sit there because I think I'm going to get hit by a car. And I'm going to tell you, six months after I left out of there one day, so, a car ran into that building. So, I mean, I think that's a point that we need to be looking at, that they, they don't need to be right up to the road. The second thing I'm going to talk about is, and I have talked about it till I was blue in face at the work session, is the artwork for the downtown district. I do not like the wording of it. I, um, we have gone back and forth, what is artwork? What is a logo? What is? So I think there has to be some more discussion on that. Who is going to be able to say, yes, it's okay? Are people going to be able to, and I agree that empty buildings, it would be nice to have some artwork in there to make them look nicer, but we have to be consistent to all our business owners everywhere that have, um, so they don't want to get in trouble that they have logos and too much signage. So I'm very unclear on that, and, um, I would kind of like to discuss it more or change the wording a little bit, but thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. So I love the trees in this city. I love the fact that we're green. I, it's one of the things that's so very charming about our city. I do understand the, the implication that, uh, our fee may be absorbent to, uh, someone who wants to develop a piece of land, and I would be amenable to reducing the fee to seventy dollars, but maybe just not fifty dollars. Um, because I think that there, when, when you're talking about, most people are not like Mr. Crisp, who are just going to cut down a tree. who are just gonna cut down a tree at their house to put something up. If you're developing a, a piece of property, you're doing so with the intent, with an intent, other than just to put up maybe a shed in your backyard. And so sometimes you factor those things in, and I think that there may be a way that a person who is doing business in that way can, can come up with seventy dollars versus fifty dollars. I think that's a viable compromise. And I wonder if that would meet the intent of the city staff and also meet the needs of people who are attempting to develop this property. In addition, with the signage, I really think that, um, that, that wording where it says other agencies, I think that's, that's a bit dangerous. Because what is another agency? And I, I think that when we had the conversation, say, da-da-da, excuse me, the conversation, Councilmember Jensen, it was very, it was very eye-opening to be brought to the forefront that a person who owns a business, you can't advertise out of the window of that business, or you can't enter into a partnership with somebody who may want to use your storefront to advertise their business in another location. Because one of the things that we discussed in that meeting was, that might actually bring that business to the downtown area. So, for example, if someone owns a shoe, a shoe store on Rayford Road, and they wanna put a shoe display in the window of one of the buildings, and they wanna put their signage to say, these shoes donated by, and it's a beautiful display that fills the window, that may, if they see that there's a really good buy-in, or, or they're getting some really great feedback from that location, that might entice that shoe shop owner to wanna bring their location downtown. So I think that that's something we should think about as we're talking about that, because that was the biggest issue when we were trying to define what artwork looked like, was can a business owner put their, their items in the window and consider that art? But I think for me, that line item, the other agencies, just really needs to be a bit cleaner. And I understand the reason, because we don't really have the downtown alliance as active in that, that process at this point, but it just needs to be cleaner. And then I would also like to know, those are my comments, now here's my two questions. What, what, how much of the four-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars do we still have remaining right now? How much of that has been spent? How much of that remains? Because what I, what I'd like to know is, I guess, and it's one of the questions that's being asked, but not directly enough for me to understand the answer, how effectively are we utilizing those funds? So are we penalizing somebody for cutting a tree down? Maybe not penalizing, that might be the wrong word. But are we putting a, a, a burden on somebody to have to cut that tree down and then just letting the money sit? Or are we actually spending those dollars? That's the first question. The second question is, with the parking, what is the, what was the intent of saying side parking or rear parking only, no front parking? Was it for traffic flow? Was it beautification? Or was it a combination of the two? So those are my two questions.
As far as the fund, uh, we as staff, in, in our Development Services Department, we just taking the, we just take in the funds. However, Parking Rec is the one that does the withdrawals.
Okay, hold on one second. Mayor Colvin, I, I think that because we don't have any information on how that money is being spent, I think it's okay if we, if we consider, or it might be okay if we consider tabling this until we have more information.
Yes, ma'am, I was gonna, as we, after everybody got their questions out, we'll, we'll individually be able to address.
Okay, because I just don't think that it's, it's not, it's not logical to be able to make a decision about how much money we take in for a fund if we don't know what, what the fund is doing. So in terms of the parking, can you, and that's no indictment, Ms., Mr. Freeman, that's no indictment. It's just, I think that we need to be, be very logical with this. In terms of the parking, what was the, the intent with that? If you can speak to that?
Well, throughout the city, in, in our commercial development, you are allowed to have, you are allowed to have parking in the front of the building. Now, act, in neighborhood commercial, for some odd reason, when they were drafting the UDO, they were not allowed to do so. You can do so if you have two stories or more, you're allowed to have.
Hold on one second, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I just need to understand, is the reason that's being given for parking not being allowed in the front, some odd reason? Or was there a, a reason that, that it was said, stated that in neighborhood commercial, you cannot have parking in the front of the building? What was the intent and the objective in reducing or eliminating parking in the front of neighborhood commercial?
That I do not know, ma'am.
See, and we need to know that also, because we can't make a deci, I can't make a decision about some, whether something should remain in place. If I don't understand the, and this is what I said the last time we talked about these items. If I don't understand the original intent of why the first conversation that put this into practice with the origin, with the UDO, was in place. If I don't understand that, then I don't have a, a guideline to be able to determine whether or not the request is an accurate request or, or a necessary request.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember, so what, what we'll do is, uh, after all the council gets their questions out, we will come back and go down each individual item for you all to make whatever decisions you wanna make. As it relates to the item related to downtown, I think item fifty-one, I'll ask council to, uh, recuse me from that particular item, uh, while you all discuss that. So, uh, I'll have a couple of more lights, and then we'll, uh, I'll look to you for your pleasure regarding each individual item. Councilmember Wright, and then Moan.
Uh, yes, a lot of the questions were asked that I had, um, but I'm very interested in coming back. And if, it seems that you don't have, uh, information pertaining to, um, the amount of money raised, what was spent, and what's being, uh, planted based upon what's being taken up. So, so the, my question will be, somebody might be able to help me. If you, what is the average that you're, that you are bringing in per year on trees cut down? Si- sixty? Sixty, so if you reduce that to fifty dollars per inch, then you would cut that in half to thirty thousand per year coming in. And based upon what you're saying here is that, uh, you guys are planting ten trees for everyone. And I love trees, and that's a part of the image of Fayetteville, and we don't wanna take that away. But I think it's a reasonable, uh, request, uh, that the committee has brought back to say, let's cut it in half based upon what we're doing. So I think that fifty dollars is, is a reasonable, um, you know, concession based upon where we're going and the outlook. The, the ne- the next question is, um, the, the no front parking or the, the, the cutting out. They, they talked about Rayford Road and that the thirty, the thirty feet or the.
Rayford Road is not.
Right, it's a DOT road.
And it's not neighborhood commercials, it's not.
Right. So, there's nothing that we could do about, um, DOT roads anyway. So, but the, the frontage, and I agree with, uh, Councilman, uh, Waddell, is that we really don't understand all the things that happen in the DOT or in the, um, uh, in the, in the, what, what, what are we dealing with? In the UDO, uh, in the UDO that we can really make a sound decision. So, when you talk about, uh, the frontage, I would really want to know that as well. So those are my two main concerns.
Well, regarding the UDO, and anytime you're putting together such a document as our UDO, which is a hundred and eight, four-hundred-and-eighty pages, you have public hearings, you have consultants, you have, you have stakeholders meetings, you're getting the input from all the citizens as well as member boards and commissions. Now, that, to my understanding, that was a very long process. It took several years for them to actually develop the UDO in itself. So therefore, I think it probably was vetted during that time. It went through rigorous, um, examinations from, from scrutiny's from other boards and commissions, and looking at making a product that the citizens of Fayetteville would be proud of.
Okay, s- and, and I appreciate that. But my concern is the decrease in, um, in contracting and building of new facilities, and, uh, that, that list has been decreasing ever since. So we went back to tweak the UDO, and we've tweaked, I mean, hundreds of items that we're trying to make it, uh, user-friendly for contractors that's coming into the city. So that's what we're still trying to do at this point. We're not trying to take away the uniformity or the, the disciplines of what the U, UDO say, but we're trying to say this is a living document, and we can go back and tweak it, not to take away, but to add and to make common sense decisions based upon the experience that we had with the original UDO. Does this make sense?
Yes, sir.
And so that's what we're doing, and, uh, we appreciate what the staff is doing. But altogether, I think it's a process, it's a heavy lift, and it's not gonna be answered all in one night. But I think that the committee has done a great job there on their way, and I think we need to support, uh, them in looking deeper into, before we can make a decision, that these decisions make, make sense. Because down the road, we're gonna have to come right back. If it's not working, we're gonna have to spend this taxpayers' dollars for staff time and also volunteer time to get it done. So let's try to get it done right the first time.
Yeah, and Councilmember Wright, just one other point of emphasis. Staff has just made a recommendation to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission is the one that made the recommendation to you all tonight. So therefore, it's not staff that is, that is saying no. It's Planning Commission that said.
Anybody here from Planning?
Sir?
Any of Planning Commissions, uh, okay. Alright, so you might wanna get pretty close up.
Maybe, maybe they can.
Alright, uh, but yeah, we're not, we're not necessarily targeting you necessarily, uh, Ms. Freeman. Alright, so, uh, Council, we need to, we need to keep these to questions. We, we have to keep these to questions, okay? So, uh, Mayor Protem, Moan, and then I saw another light, with Councilmember Waddell, and then we've gotta make a decision on some things.
Question on three of the different items, we'll stay right here, uh, where you just were. So, on the left, you know, the Dollar General by Westover High School, under the current, there is no thirty percent allowed facing the street.
That is correct.
On the right, which is a much larger lot, um, that's similar recommendation. It could be on the side, it could be on the back, up to thirty percent facing the street.
That is correct.
Okay, so in the current way it's worded, you said thirty percent, if it's two or more stories, then thirty percent would be allowed? Because you, a little while ago, you said two stories.
Yes, so if they have two stories, then they can, they are allowed to have parking in, along the roadway.
Can we change that to, you know, the proposed is, whether it's one story, two story, three story.
The proposed is allowing a one-story building to have parking in the front of the building.
Right.
Yes.
And to me, that makes total sense, okay, thank you. The downtown window displays, those buildings are all privately owned. We're going to be looking at updated, updating our historic design guidelines. You know, anybody's been to Europe, Italy, Germany, you walk downtown, you get menus on the windows or menus posted by the doors. But in our design standards, we don't allow that.
No, we don't.
We, unless, right, we don't allow that.
No, we do allow.
But you had, you set a sign on the window, then you pay for it.
Has to have a permit still.
A permit?
Yes.
So, those are the type of permits that are a waste, in my personal opinion. Well, if we remove that need for a permit, and I understand a display is one foot away from the window.
That is correct.
I'm not sure why we ever allowed the downtown alliance or other agencies to have approval of authority over buildings they don't own. If I owned a building and I had a window and I wanted a display, no other private organizations should censor me, and our historic design guidelines should not allow me to be censored based on my freedom of expression, as long as it's not, you know, vulgar or something. Yeah, that's, so the question, I think they, others have answered. We don't know who the other agencies are. I agree with removing the code enforcement director. They've got more important things to do. But staff is recommending, or planning staff is recommending what's on the right. Is that correct?
That is, sorry, Planning Commission, yes, sir.
Planning Commission, okay. And on the tree removal, so the question, the UDO committee recommended reduction of fifty dollars per kilo per inch. The Planning Commission recommends keep it at a hundred. And then the money is being used for the tree preservation fund or rebuilding fund. Is there a reason that only commercial development, including new housing areas, have to pay for a tree removal? But like, if I cut one down in my backyard, I don't have to. So it's only for new development, but I could clear-cut my land if I wanted to without paying a penny.
Right, if it's just a single lot, subdi, uh, single lot within a subdivision, and you wanna remove a tree, you have that right. However, if you are a developer and you want to remove a large swash of trees, then, then you will have to, then you'll have to go through the process of identifying your specimen trees and then paying the, the tree removal fee.
Right, just a specimen, yeah.
Yes, just a specimen.
Okay, so, if that specimen tree ends up being on a single-family residential plot after the neighborhood is planted, does a, is that just for neighborhood development? Or if a individual, I bought a, a parcel of land along a major road, and I wanted to build a house, and there was a specimen tree there, would I have to pay for that?
No, sir.
Development?
No, if you.
Only developers?
That is correct.
Not private citizens?
That's correct. So if it's, so if it's a large, if it's a, anything, if it's a residential subdivision that is being proposed, and it has to go through our technical review process, being reviewed by our staff members, then it will have to, they have to identify the specimen trees, and then they will have to pay the fee to, to remove those trees.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Alright, um, I have a couple of second-rounders. Uh, Councilman Crisp?
Mr. Mayor, I heard you moments ago talking about, I think I heard you say something, and some people have talked about delaying this. Let me say this to you. First of all, with the trees, we're not talking about every tree. We're talking about specimen trees. But I want to, I want to bring this point, cuz I think it's relevant and apropos and prudent. We had people who understand design that messed with this stuff for a year. We had two council members that sat in on all of these meetings. I wanna deal with this tonight. I don't want, look, I don't know diddly squat about design. But I know this, that when we ask citizens of this city to commit time and energy to these projects in the interest of helping this city go forward, then at some point in time, we have to recognize the contribution that these citizens have made. Now, a lot of time and effort has gone into this, okay? A lot of discussion. Everything that we're discussing tonight has already been discussed by the committee before now. And now we're talking about going back to the drawing board again. I wanna vote on each one of these things individually, and let's get on with the next round before I retire from this council. Thank you.
Alright, Councilmember Waddell, and then we'll, we'll need to have some action, Council.
So, I, I would, um, I would almost be inclined to agree with Mr. Crisp, with the exception of, I guess the statement that was made really solidifies the point that I'm trying to make, is in that we rely on not just the input of the citizen committees and the, um, you know, like the Planning Committee is a citizen committee also, and they recommended not approving that, that particular item for tree removal fee. But we also rely heavily on the recommendation of our staff, because it is my understanding and expectation that staff has done adequate research to be able to answer any questions that we may have when the, this limited piece of information comes before us. And it's a little disheartening when you ask, when I ask a question, and I'm met with, the process is so exhaustive. Our minutes are kept, most of the, the meetings are recorded. It would be my expectation that before a recommendation is presented to the council on the part of staff, that staff is able to articulate why that recommendation is being made. And when that cannot happen, for me, my confidence is shaken in the recommendation. And that's why, that and that alone is the only reason why I feel like this, this particular, these co- questions that I asked, we are making decisions in terms of the, the look and feel of our city for perpetuity until somebody decides that they wanna come behind and review and change this again. And so it's just very important to me that we make that with all of the best information before us. before us. And so it is my request that, as we consider that, we consider allowing this to be reviewed a little bit more, so that we can make sure that we make the right decision as a council. But if that is not the case, then, you know, I'm, I'm but one member of ten, but that is, that is where I stand.
All right, well, we, we can, we can test that with, uh, with motions. So I will clear the board. We've all spoken. Look to you for action, and I think that the consensus was to address these individually.
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Dawkins?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that, uh, we approve TA nineteen dash oh four zero thirty
Put them all back up there together.
dash five dot B dot six dot E dot two, uh, the tree fine reducing from a hundred dollars to fifty dollars.
Second, sir.
All right, there's a motion by Councilmember Dawkins, I think a second came in from Councilmember Arp. Um, any further discussion on item number one? All right, Council, I'll look to you for your votes.
Green.
All right, Madam Clerk, that is nine to one. Those voting in favor, Councilman Crisp, Cullington, Arp, Wright, Colvin, Moan, Jensen, Hare, Dawkins. Those voting in opposition, Councilmember Waddell. All right, Councilman Dawkins?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve TA dash, or TA nineteen dash oh forty-three thirty dash five dot F dot four dot D dot one. Final plat reference, um, yes, all based on the recommendations.
Second.
Uh, all right, there's a motion by Councilmember Dawkins, and a second by Councilmember Wright, uh, to approve, uh, item number two, ending in zero four three, final plat reference.
Question on the motion.
Sir?
Question on the motion.
Okay.
Is that, that's the one we're talking about, the one for stub outs now, right? Stub outs?
Yes, again?
Stub outs.
Stub outs, stubs.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Good? All right, there's, there's a motion by Councilmember Dawkins, there's a second by, uh, Councilman Wright. Any further discussion on the motion? All right, Council, I'll look to you for your votes.
Green.
Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. All right, Councilman Dawkins?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve TA nineteen dash oh forty-seven thirty dash five dot G dot three dot A dot two dot A, which is the front and a butt clarification recommended by the UDO Task Force.
Second.
Uh, there's a motion by Councilmember Dawkins, there's a second by Councilmember Hare. Okay, uh, question on the motion, Councilmember Waddell?
Was this the line item where staff was indicating that there was not clarity in the way that this was written, and that there needed to be clarity?
That is.
Because if so, are we voting on an item that's unclear, and will potentially have to be reviewed and, and re-recommended at some point?
Well, staff's position are recommendations only, so from their perspective, they're saying that they would like more time to review. But, uh, as indicated during the comments, I think this originally was discussed back in April, and now here we are.
No, I understand, but I think my, my question was directed to Mr. Freeman. Was this the item that you were saying that there was unclarity in the way that it was written?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, all right, so there, there's, uh, there are motions on the floor, there's a question by Councilmember Moan.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Freeman. Looking at your diagram, and it was mentioned, needs some additional clarity. Can you give an, an example of what type of additional clarity is needed?
Well, every sub, a zero-lot line subdivision has to have ten percent of the, has to have ten percent fronting, and, fronting the open space. So, if you have these lots right here, which a butt, which is a recommendation from the UDO Task Force, they want that to be part of the ten percent. Now, to make that really truly a part of the ten percent, because where it's located in the code itself, which deals with building orientation, which deals with the, the primary entranceway of the structure itself, you will have to turn the house around to a butt that open space.
I mean, looking at that diagram, the green, the main entrance is probably facing to the northeast, whatever, long something road.
It's because.
So, so they are abutting that green space right now.
But this portion of the section of the code deals with building orientation. If it was somewhere else in the code, then it would be more clear and concise, and, and not as confusing. Because when you say abutting, you're, we're not talking about the lot, we're talking about the, the building, whether building, primary front of the building is. The building, primary front of the building is facing towards the street.
So the clarifying language might be something like, the building or lot can a butt or face. Would that be clarifying language?
That is correct.
Can we make that right now on the fly? That we say the building or lot? But, but in, the portion of this is the building orientation? So we can potentially, in that same section of the ordinance, say, building or lot, a butt or face? I, I mean, if we came to that kind of consensus?
So, right now, there's, there's a motion on the floor, so he, I guess he would have to accept that amendment.
A friendly amendment.
If staff understood what Mayor Protem's, uh,
Yes.
questions are.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I, I need some additional guidance, because I'm outside of my purview here, so I, I would like, may I ask a, um, member of the task force to come up? Um, Ms. Zepper, would you come up?
Well, 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 we've got a, uh, I'm, well, yeah, we need to direct it to, to staff, see if he can answer it, Mr. Dawkins, so we're not pulling, we've closed the public hearing piece of it.
Well, but, is this, uh, Taurus, are you comfortable with answering this?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Restate your question. So, the difference in what Mayor Protem was proposing, language-wise, versus what you're proposing, what is the difference?
Well, right here, on the right side, under subsection, you know, A, it specifically says, building orientation, and that's where Mr. Freeman was saying that the three in the green would not qualify, because the buildings are facing the streets, not facing that, you know, natural wetland-type area. But if, under building, it said, building or, building orientation, or you could say, building or lot orientation, would either a butt or front, then would that?
That is correct.
And would that be any major problem? Because then those three buildings would get credit of the ten percent.
That is correct. That's right in line with staff was, was thinking.
So we could potentially, if council agrees, make that recommendation tonight, and then we could make that modification, and this wouldn't have to come back?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, so, I guess, Councilman Dawkins, uh, did you, I guess, did you accept the proposed, uh, amendment to your motion, since you made it?
Yes, sir, it's fine.
All right, and Councilman Hare, did you second that?
Yes, sir, yes.
So you, you agree with? All right, so, uh, as we finish that, the motion's been amended, so Councilmember Wright, uh, for question?
Uh, I have clarity. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't need to ask the question.
All right, so, Council, we have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Dawkins, amended motion as reflected in the discussion, second by Councilmember, uh, Hare.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Could we restate the amended motion?
Yes, pl- please restate it, uh, Councilman, all right. I think this was to, uh, if I'm correct, this was to approve this particular item with the addition, instead of building orientation, it said, and/or lot orientation. Is that right? Is, was that it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, you tracking that, Councilmember Arp?
And/or lot orientation.
So in other words, not just the building being oriented, but they would also get credit if the lot, uh, was oriented?
Or lot.
Building or lot, yes.
Okay, I, I got it.
Okay, all right. All right, Council, uh, with that, we'll look to you for your votes.
Green.
All right, Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Mr. Freeman, can you go back to the list of, uh?
Yes, sir.
All right, uh, Council, I'll look to you for action. Councilman Dawkins?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve TA nineteen dash oh forty-nine thirty dash five dot one dot three dot E dot two, front parking in neighborhood commercial districts.
There's a motion by Councilmember Dawkins, there's a second by Councilmember Hare, uh, to approve this item. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Council, I'll look to you for your votes. This is item zero four nine, front, front parking. Okay, uh, Councilmember Arp?
Green.
Madam Clerk, that is nine to one. Those voting in favor, Councilman Crisp, Cullington, Arp, Wright, Colvin, Moan, Jensen, Hare, Dawkins, voting in opposition, Councilmember Waddell. All right, uh, Council, I'll ask that, uh, on this particular item, if, uh, myself and Councilmember Jensen can be recused, uh, just to, uh, not have any appearances of conflict.
I move to excu- recuse the mayor and Mrs. Jensen from a vote on TA nineteen dash zero five one.
Second.
Mr. Moan?
We, we have a motion and a second, uh, to recuse, not exclude, but recuse both Councilmember Jensen and Mayor Colvin. Yes, sir. Um, do we have any questions? Okay, I call for your vote.
Green.
And that is unanimous? Okay, Mr. Dawkins, um, since you've been making the motions as part of the, uh, council representative on the committee.
He's appealing to me, I'll make a motion if I may.
Okay, Mr. Crisp.
I move to disapprove the vacant, uh, window display ordinance, TA nineteen dash zero five one.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Crisp, second by Councilmember Cullington. Do we have any questions? Okay, I see Councilmember Dawkins with the question, followed by Councilmember Moan.
Thank you, Councilmember Moan. Um, it looks like this may not pass, Taurus, so would, would that mean it goes back to staff for some additional clarification? Or do we reconstitute the UDO Task Force? What, what generally would happen now?
Let me, let me amend my motion if I may. May I amend my motion?
Please, sir.
I move to disapprove TA nineteen dash zero five one, display of window ordinance, and refer it back to staff for clarification.
Councilmember Cullington, do you accept that clarification?
I do.
Okay, we have a question by the city attorney, Ms., uh, Attorney McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, Protem. So from what I understand, the proposal, the more appropriate motion, may I suggest, would be to simply remand the item back to staff for revisions consistent with the discussion. Um, as you know, sometimes when we make these negative motions, uh, it creates a tad bit of confusion. And so, that would be my recommendation, is just simply to remand it back.
And I would draw my motion, and I move that TA nineteen dash zero five one be remanded back to staff for clarification along the lines of the discussion that has ensued on this evening. That is my motion.
Councilmember Cullington, are you okay with that?
I'll second that.
You'll second that? Okay.
And that it be post haste, Councilmember Crisp? And that it be post haste before you retire?
Right.
I certainly hope so.
Okay, councilmembers, any questions right now? I see Councilmember Hare has a question?
Oh, sir.
Oh, that was a vote?
Yes, sir.
Do we have any other questions at this time?
I do, Mr. Mr. Mayor Protem.
Oh, yes, sir, Councilmember Arp.
Can we, can we set a date to have staff come back to us?
Let's do that, let's do that.
Well, Mr. Assist, uh, Mr. Hewitt, how long do you think, come back with the next batch of, uh, ordinance updates?
Yes, sir, um, according to, um, uh, Michael Gibson, um, some of the information that council requested has previously been presented to the Gateway Committee, and so we'll be able to repackage some of that, along with some additional information and questions that you had about, um, how the money is spent, where the money, no, this isn't on trees, this is on the, um,
Yeah, we're talking downtown.
On the yard. We'll be able to, hopefully come back with you by Friday.
Okay, Mr. Freeman, I do have a question. If, um, go back to the wording of the proposed changes, is it, I think, well, it's possible to put the city manager or designee. As a professional planner over the years, that number four, is it common for people other than city staff, or the city managers, designee?
Item number five, sir?
Right, examples, you know, even though somebody provides something, is it common that it has to be to, you know, still be approved in writing, to have it displayed in a, in a private building? That's, that's my part. I don't care about, well, I, I care, but whether the Downtown Alliance, or Cool Spring Districts, or some other group approves of something on a private property, that's censorship. I, I can't go for that at all. If it's a private building with a private window, if a person wants to put it in there, it doesn't need to be approved by anybody.
And staff can work on that language and.
Can you work on that? Because I don't want some, yeah, okay.
Thank you. All right, uh, clear the board. Do we, oh, we got Councilmember Wright?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment on the comment, uh, that the Mayor Protem made, and I think, if I may, that, uh, we're looking at uniformity and the image that we present in our downtown district, or anywhere in, in the city, when it comes to signage. And if a person owns the building, of course, they can put up signage or whatever, but then are we getting into what size the signage is, where it would be placed in there for the, the sake of, of image, uh, and uniformity, uh, in the city? Because I, I, I really don't want to have all kinds of signs, all different colors, all, you know, it gets into that. So, I don't know if it's, uh, we're trying to censor, or what we're trying to do is develop an image for our downtown, and, and across the city, just like the big signs. And I don't want to get into, anybody can put up anything they want at any time, and that's going to take away from the image that we're trying to create. And, and I don't, I don't know if that makes sense, or am I on track to say that we can do that as a for, a form of uniformity in the image that we're trying to portray?
Sir, and this is not for signage, uh, all signage that is in our downtown historic district has to go through a minor COA process. We're talking about this window display?
Yeah, I understand that. I, I understand, I use the word signage, but the window displays, you're gonna have an image there, whether it's a piece of paper, whether it's a, a flyer, whether it's, whatever it is. Um, you know, if it's done in good taste, it's fine, but if we give free course to whatever, then.
Man of order, we're getting way away from the motion that's on the floor.
Correct.
We have some other que- another question about the motion.
Good, good point there, Councilmember Crisp. So the last question I see about the motion, the item is from Councilmember Cullington.
Thank you, Mary Protem. I would just make a friendly amendment to Mr. Crisp's motion, if you would allow, that, uh, we just set the October twenty-third agenda briefing date to have those, uh, reworkings come back to us.
I will accept that.
So, the, October twenty-third, next month, agenda briefing, of, another discussion on the wording for this item. Okay, do we have any further questions on the motion? All right, Council, I'll call for your vote.
Green.
And that is unanimous of those voting. Thank you all.
All right.
Yeah, hurry, that's unanimous.
Twenty-third, October.
All right. All right, I'm back. All right, item, um, nine point zero one, uh, stormwater ordinance amendment. We'll give a few minutes for, uh, room to clear. Y'all need a bathroom break?
Yes, sir.
All right, so, Council, you said. All right, so council, you said yes or no?
Yes, sir.
All right, council, let's take a, uh, ten minute break.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. This evening, I am going to very briefly take a quick look at all of the elements of the Drainage Assistance Program that we've presented to you over the last several weeks, and that are summarized in the ordinance amendment that we are asking you to pass this evening. So we'll talk quickly about the timeline, the key elements that have been presented, a couple items that were clarified in the language in the ordinance version that you have in front of you, and then take any questions. Over the past few months, starting in June 10th, the council has taken a series of steps to clarify off right-of-way and on-right-of-way drainage responsibilities. Throughout the summer, the staff worked to develop a program to assist those residents who have stormwater problems off of the right-of-way. We presented that program to the Stormwater Advisory Board, also the Stormwater Committee, as well as the council in a series of meetings. We focused on the eligibility criteria and the cost share as to the key items. We last came to you on September 10th, where we gave you sort of the wrap-up piece of that, and then tonight, we're presenting it all in an ordinance form. So the key elements that we presented were the eligibility criteria, which tell us what residents would be eligible for assistance, the cost share and administrative fees, and the preliminary evaluation that we did on the current backlog of potential projects. So reviewing again, I won't read them all, but these were the eligibility criteria that we presented and that are captured in the ordinance. There are five requirements and seven exclusionary statements, and those will be used to determine what types of requests will be able to become projects. We also talked about how the projects will be prioritized, once they're determined to be eligible. They'll be investigated. Smaller projects that can be completed typically by a two-to-three-day effort by city crews will be taken care of by city crews. More complex projects will be referred to for engineering. That will include developing a preliminary solution and a cost estimate, and then a list of those prioritized projects will go before the Stormwater Advisory Board for review and approval. Once approved, the projects will begin design and construction. Regarding administrative fees and cost share, the staff had recommended a $75 application fee, beginning with next year's budget. That is not part of this ordinance. That's simply a recommendation for you to consider as we go forward next year, and we recommended no cost share, and that is reflected in the ordinance. This is our preliminary evaluation of the current backlog of requests that your constituents have put into the city for work off the right-of-way. When we looked at them based solely on the information in our database, they were roughly broken up into a third that we believe will be eligible, a third likely to be ineligible, and a third that need further investigation. The reason for the further investigation, as you'll see if you look at the chart on the right, the pie chart breaks down the different types of complaints, and some of those definitions really require a site visit to determine the exact nature of the problem. So as soon as this ordinance goes forward, we have a local contractor gradient on standby, and they are going to begin doing those site visits and beginning to really get down into the weeds on taking care of these problems. These are a couple items that were discussed earlier that needed a little bit of clarification, so you'll find in the ordinance, they are called out a little differently than we may have seen in the past in the presentation. One is just to clarify that the design for a project will be the most cost-effective alternative. That is the same way that we treat city projects in the right-of-way. So in other words, we're trying to solve the problem at the lowest cost. So that's the approach that we'll take with the off-right-of-way projects as well. Also, we clarified that sediment removal would not be covered as part of the program. And then on the following slides, I won't read it verbatim, but this is just simply the actual ordinance amendment language. It's broken down into four sections. Section A just talks about the kind of the introductory language. Section B explains the process. Section C explains the eligibility criteria and breaks that down. And Section D talks about the prioritization, and then finally, there's some legal language at the end. With that, I'll take any questions you may have on the ordinance amendment?
Got you. Thank you, sir. Councilmember Hare. Thank you, Mayor, and council. I think you understand how I feel about the ordinance. As we look at our off-the-right-of-way concerns from our citizens, there where you're going to have the site visits, will the site visits to include the off-of-the-right-of-way concerns?
Yes, sir. Those are the site visits we're talking about.
Okay. And if we have a concern where we have the storm drain, then we have the pipe that runs from the storm drain. Let's say that pipe runs, I think one on the easement I had was 50, 60 feet. What is the discussion for our audience on the responsibility for that, and where does that fall within the eligibility concern?
So in a hypothetical situation like you described, with a storm drain on the street, running into a pipe that's under the ground on private property, and say the pipe failed, that type of project would be eligible. So the site visit would determine that, okay? The site visit would come to that determination, and then if the pipe was large enough that it could not be repaired by city crews, it would be referred to engineering for a design, and then subsequently become another city project, an infrastructure project.
Now, I understand that we're building a list. If you go back to your little clips there, you had different pie charts for, okay, yeah, you have, that's for, you know, as far as your investigation goes. Now, if you have a concern, well, let me ask this first. In setting the priority for the concerns that you receive, who, how do we get to the point of where you fall on the list? How do you get to that point?
For the purposes of moving...
For the citizen.
Yes, sir. For the purposes of moving forward with this program, we are attacking the list chronologically as it has been presented to us. So the list is built up over the past year. Our consultant is just going to start moving down that list. We anticipate it's going to take several weeks to sort of triage that list. We will be moving through them as they were presented to us, as the complaints were presented to us.
Okay. Okay for now. Okay for now.
All right. Councilmember Wright?
Yeah. For the listeners and residents, just kind of explain the sediment removal, because you said that was not a part of the packet. So let our residents know what that responsibility they have to remove sediment, and what that actually breaks down to be.
Yes, sir. So if a resident had an outfall pipe that comes out into a low area, like a swale, somewhere that's, you know, not a natural waterway, it's expected that residents would clear out debris that would tend to build up in that area on their own. Now, we are approaching that, when we say clear out debris, clear out with normal equipment that people or landscapers would have. If a situation arises where specialized equipment comes in, that's when we would look at assisting them through this program.
Got you. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Dawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to recognize the Stormwater Advisory Board. I know Chairman Dino Hondros is here. If you would stand, and I think Principal Al Miller. Are you still Principal Al? He's not a principal anymore. Okay. Anyone else from the Stormwater Advisory Board? What Councilmember Hare mentioned is very, very important. What's going to happen, citizens, is the Stormwater Advisory Board is going to be presenting these projects from our engineering team and our engineer advisor or contractor with the city, and that's going to go to the Stormwater Advisory Board. They're going to assign points, and then that's going to dictate how projects move forward. So I want to thank you for explaining that. I want to thank Councilmember Hare for bringing that up. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Chris?
Mr. Lush, there's a salvage yard off Yackin Road, right near the bridge over the All-American Freeway. But as you go out the freeway, there's an area in that salvage yard that has, it looks like Niagara Falls. Have you seen that?
I have been to visit that site. Yes, sir.
I'm not going to ask whether that qualifies, but I certainly hope it does qualify for us to do something about that. It's getting bigger and bigger every time we have heavy rain. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You good, sir? Councilman Hare?
Yes, sir. One, maybe one more question. As we get to the site visits, and we receive a call, if we have a pipe, a drainage pipe that runs a very long distance into the rear yard of a resident, that's something that will be investigated, because it is off the right-of-way. So our policy is saying that that also will be investigated. If there's a breakage or a damage and there starts to be storm drain that is not going all the way through and is backing there in the yard, that also would be investigated, and the citizens won't have to go through a whole lot to get staff out there to investigate it, to tell them what the next steps are.
That's correct, sir. We will, upon request of the citizen, we will send a staff member or our consulting partner out to do the site investigation and evaluate that project, if necessary. If it's a larger project, rank it and prioritize it.
Okay. One more question, maybe my last question. You mentioned the, and I'm glad that you did, you mentioned the word swells. Now, for example, let's just look at the city produce swells, where, for example, in the Bonny Doom area, where swells were dug out throughout that community out there. If there is a backup or issue or concern within that swell where it starts to overflow within the community, all right, where does that responsibility fall?
If the swale is inside of the right-of-way, that responsibility would fall on the city maintenance. If the swale is outside of the right-of-way, the citizen would have to put in a request to have it evaluated under this program.
Okay. And if you would, just explain to the citizens, what does it mean inside the city right-of-way versus not?
The right-of-way is the property that the city assumes maintenance responsibility for, and it generally consists of the roadway, the gutters, if there's gutters along the roadway, and some measured distance off the edge of the roadway, usually a few feet. It varies in each location, but it's generally the roadway and a short area adjacent to the roadway.
Okay. Because these particular swells that I'm speaking of, in the past, the city would not assist. So are we saying now that this new stormwater policy changes that?
It's possible.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. So just before we go to Councilman Dawkins, just for clarity for this pie chart up here. So basically, on the ones that have been evaluated, 42% you've noticed have maintenance issues in the ditch and require some type of cleaning. Is that the way to read this chart to the right?
That's based on the information given by the citizen that we have. We still have to do a site visit on those. So that's a little ambiguous, which is why I put it there. Yes, sir.
All right. All right. So Councilman Dawkins?
Mr. Mayor, in the interest of time, I'm ready to make a motion if it pleases the council.
Ready to hear you.
All right. Mayor, I'm going to make the motion, and then I will ask for, to be recognized for some discussion. I'm making a motion that the city council approve the Drainage Assistant Program recommended by the...
Thank you, sir. There's a motion by Councilmember Dawkins, there's a second by Councilmember Wright. Let me clear the board. All right. Any questions for discussion? Councilman Dawkins?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want our citizens and those in the audience to understand, why are we here? Why are we doing this? Why is the city of Fayetteville doing something that no other city in the state of North Carolina is doing? And the reason being is because my cousin, John Henley, Senator, 1959, got the General Assembly, got a motion passed in General Assembly to exempt Cumberland County municipalities from the ability to annex. From 1959, which was not that long ago, to 1985, the city of Fayetteville cannot annex. So what happened? All the development occurred along the border of the city because they could get access to clean water and sewer from PWC. Therefore, all this development occurred, and it was designed and built at county standards, much smaller pipes. Your city has a stormwater infrastructure system. We're actually now a stormwater utility, per Chairman Hondros. Therefore, we require much larger pipes, much larger infrastructure. The county does not. Therefore, when we did the annexations, beginning with Bill Hurley in 1986, and my dad, 1987, '88, and then the Big Bang in Marshall Pitts, 2005, we took in all this area that had substandard infrastructure. Now we're paying for it, and I know I need to speed up. But I want folks to understand, Senator Henley was scared to death that the city of Fayetteville was going to annex Hope Mills because it had not been incorporated at the time, and that would have been a great move. Fayetteville would be much bigger, but then Fayetteville would be able to control annexation, and we would not have been penalized. And it set us back, I thought, 50 years. Changed that. That bill in the legislature set us back 100 years, and about $400 million in tax money that we could not use to build infrastructure. So therefore, Mr. Mayor, I'm excited about this. We have 1.8 million allocated for our staff and SWAB, Stormwater Advisory Board, to figure out what gets spent. And when that money gets spent by June 30th of 2020, that's it. If it gets spent before then, that's it. And then this council has got to figure out, based on staff recommendations, how much we have to put forward. But I want to thank the council. I want to thank our Stormwater Committee, which is made up of Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmember Larry Wright, Council Lady Tisha Waddell, and Councilman Dan Cullerton.
Thank you, sir. And again, I want to kind of echo you, sentiments reference to the Stormwater Committee. You guys have put in a lot of tedious work. This is not easy to change and look at these ordinances, but I think that City of Fayetteville is kind of being proactive and resilient, so thank you for that. Councilman Hare?
Okay, Mayor. This is really is my last concern for right now. So I want to make sure I'm understanding to the maker of the motion. So when citizens, even though we're passing or we're voting tonight for what we have on this particular ordinance, the citizens of Fayetteville can be assured that as concerns and issues continue to develop, this is not an end-all tonight, that there will be amending and relooking at how do we continue to move forward with the stormwater issues.
Mr. Mayor, can I answer that?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Hare, what we want to do is put actually in wording where if heavy equipment is required on a swell or a ditch cleanout, that the city would be responsible. That's just one example. This Stormwater Committee is going to go on for years, and I know it's not exciting, but it's something that's got to be...
It is exciting.
Council Lady Waddell and I agree, it is exciting, because it's helping citizens with big problems. Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. Just to clarify, so the motion on the floor is to approve the recommended changes that were attached to item 9.01. It was moved and properly seconded. We've had sufficient discussion. Now it's time to vote. Council, I'll look to you for your vote.
Vouch.
First one after that. All right. Madam Kirk, that is unanimous. Thank you, sir. Item 9.02, the amended addition of the boards and appointments, and I will go to the chair of that illustrious committee. Councilmember Chris? Wow. Let's go.
Thank you, Councilmember Chris. I would like to make a motion that we approve the following people for the committees that we have selected. I will start off reading them. So the Appointments Committee unanimously approved the following appointments. Fayetteville Cumberland Economic Development Corporation Board, Rajan Shamsani, say it, Johnny?
Sham Doshani.
Sham Doshani.
Sham Doshani.
Yes. Senior Citizens Advisory Council, Edna A. Cogdell, Gertrude Thompson, Janice Donaldson, Morris L. Bowden, Gordon Muthlin, and Prudence Maynard. Stormwater Advisory Board, Alton L. Miller III, Edward T. Parks, Joseph R. Hatchet?
Yes, good enough.
Thank you. Benjamin A. Stout, Cassandra M. Elin, Danielle Gaddy, and Jeffrey A. Nobles.
So there's a motion by Councilmember Jensen, there's a second by Councilmember Wright. Any discussion on the motion? All right. Council, I'll look to you for your votes.
Vouch.
All right. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Motion carried?
Mr. Mayor, if I can for one minute? I would like to say publicly, this, when we finished our Appointments Committee this last time, that Mr. Councilmember Chris basically told us that that was probably going to be his last Appointments meeting as our chair, and I would like to thank him for doing such a great job. I have been on this committee for four years now, and it is a very challenging job. It is probably one of the hardest committees to be on, because there is a lot of work, and he did it with, he showed us the way a lot of times. And thank you very much for making it go so smoothly.
Sergeant Major. Having said that, I will accept donations from each of you. Thank you.
All right. Well, with that, I'll entertain a motion to dismiss before we get in trouble in here. So, all right. Y'all have a good night.